Getting to order, this is a council work session, the purpose of which is to discuss potential development of the vacant property within the CRA. And I guess I'll turn it over to Councilmember Fernandez, whose idea I think was the genesis of the workshop. So, Councilmember Fernandez.
Okay, well, I would like to suggest that we look into the process of putting a park area in the open space in the downtown area. And to that end, I've looked at several places, and I think, I'm not sure, do we have a presentation? Or what?
We have the, the images from Port Paris.
Okay.
And also from Hollywood.
Okay, so as I mentioned at that CRA meeting, there are several places around the state that I've been to that have a little stage area, and they're basically just rectangles. And there's a little, very informal, not fancy, stage area at one end, and a little playground at the other, and an open area of turf in between. And if you look at, I think, closer examples, Sparkman's Wharf, near Armature Works and outside of Ulay Lee, you see, if you go to these places, you see how active they are, and just teeming with people. And Hollywood Beach has a similar setup, where they have a little stage at one end, and they have a little playground, and a little open space in the middle, and that's, obviously, they have the beach in the background there, but along the sides are some restaurants. And then, at Fort Myers, at the Gulf Coast Center, that would be most consistent with the space we have, because that's in a shopping center area. And it's in the center, and it's got restaurants and stores basically all around it, and the stage, there's nothing fancy at all. It's a concrete structure, no walls, you know, nothing, no electronics, no lighting, no, I mean, just simple lighting, so that you can obviously see. And green space in the middle, and the playground at the end, but it's very active. So as people are there, they're hanging out along the sides, the kids are running around in the middle, or if there's a concert or some sort of performance, they're standing on the stage, and people are still running around, and kids are playing on the playground, it's very active. I don't know anything about the space that we, the size of the space that we have, if we were to do something, that there would still be buildable space? I don't know, because obviously, this property would come off the tax rolls. But I do know that we've been struggling to find viable sale, you know, make a viable sale. We haven't had a lot of offers for that space. So it seems like, to me, this could be a win, in that it's attractive, makes the area more attractive, and provides more of a destination of use. So I'd like to ask us to explore an option like this.
How do you want to do, did you want to show the presentations now?
Yeah, I think, if you want to put some of the pictures up, and then I'll describe what you're looking at.
I have a couple of slides, forgive me, Greg Pauli, Community Development Director. I have a couple of slides that can lead into that, and it will help with both reference of the parcels that we're speaking about, as well as the overall size of the parcels. If I could please get the PowerPoint up on the screens, please? This first slide, I know this image on the right has got a lot of detail and can be hard to read, but the following slides will zoom in a bit. We're talking about the southeast quadrant of the redevelopment area. We have two parcels currently listed for sale, remaining in our inventory, 8901 North 56th Street and 8447 North 56th Street. You will see them referred to by their numerical address throughout. Also, for reference, I've marked in a different shade the Springdale Pond and the Riverside Park for the planned park improvements that are currently in review. The first parcel that's listed for sale is 1.75 acres at the 8901 property. It has 345 feet of road frontage along North 56th Street, which also runs on the other side, along Bertha Palmer Boulevard. It has 221 feet that run east to west on its north and south boundaries along B Street and C Street. This zoomed-in image shows you its reference to the Fountain Shops to the north, as well as Waverly Terrace to the east, and just out of frame is Winn-Dixie to the south. This is an aerial rendering that shows, looking more kind of to the northeast. You can see the Waverly Apartments in the background, and at the very left edge of the image, you can see the beginning of the Fountain Shops. The other parcel that may be of interest for today's discussion is the parcel located at 8447 North 56th Street. It is very slightly smaller, at 1.74 acres. It has 153 feet of road frontage along 56th Street. It is slightly obscured due to a public transit bus stop that sits along the northwestern corner of the property. There is a corner parcel that is owned by a separate owner that cuts out a section of this parcel, giving it somewhat unusual shape, and it does have 210 feet of road frontage along River Hills Drive. And this is an aerial shot looking back to the east. You can see where the old building was demolished a while back and removed, and you can kind of see how it wraps around the corner property, as well as it's a tree lot. And at this point, I will refer back to Councilmember, these are some of the photos that we were referencing earlier.
Yes, okay, so in the bottom-left corner is basically a picture, this is the Gulf Coast Center at Fort Myers, and this is the stage, so as I said, it's an extremely simple structure. And I have actually seen concerts there, so it is, it's got the electrical outlets and things people need. And then, the top-right is basically just a picture of some of the space as you go between the stage and the playground. You can see there's people, you know, obviously, hanging out, and kids' scooters and things, kids running around, and then some seating along the side. If people come for concerts, they bring like their own lawn seats, or towels, or whatever.
How big is that area? I mean, obviously, that's not the whole, is it like?
No.
Is it twice that size, 10 times that size? How big is that?
It wasn't, I want to say that the green space is probably not much longer than from here to the trophy case, and then there's a playground at one end, and then the stage at the other end, so.
Okay.
I did not measure it.
No, but I mean, this is kind of pretty much the whole thing. It's not like this is a small portion of it.
Yeah, so this is, basically, this is half. So here's the half where the upper right-hand corner is the half where the playground ends, and that previous picture was the half from the middle point to the stage. So this is basically, so I'm standing kind of right in the middle.
Okay.
And then this picture on the left, it is from Google Earth, but it's really more like an artist rendering of, so it still has, it has kind of the layout of being an urban park in a shopping center, but that's not actually Florida Gulf Coast Park.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Which thing I, I'm here.
There's multiple, there are multiple. Now, this is a, this is a very big shopping center.
Okay, so it's a shop.
It is a shopping center. This shopping center has a Bass Pro Shop, it has a Bell's, it might even have a Belk's. It has a lot of smaller stores and a lot of restaurants. So if you're, if you're looking at this picture, and you go all the way to the edge, that's a restaurant, right there. Right on the other side, there's a restaurant, there's an ice cream shop, there's another restaurant. So basically, the park is, it's just a rectangle. You come up from, there's a retention pond and a playground, and then green space, the stage, and along the sides are restaurants and the ice cream shops and stores.
Attractive, should be the area.
There are, there are, I mean, it is a big shopping center that has a lot of stores in it. So now, this is Hollywood Beach, and you can see their stage setup is a little more extensive, but if you look, it's the same, it's basically the same principle, in that they've got a little stage, they've got a little astroturf area, and alongside the left of, if you're looking at either picture, the left and right sides of this space are restaurants. And so obviously, it's very active, and then you can't see, because I don't think I, not, do I have, oh, I do have it, okay. There's a little playground there that, so you've got, and in each of these settings, you've got parents, and I've seen concerts here as well, but you've got parents sitting at the restaurant, they have outdoor seating, and the kids are running around on the playground or in the green space, and if there is a concert, people are sitting, they bring their chairs. Again, they're not, I mean, we're not talking, they're not booking Pink Floyd, they're very small local bands usually, but in both cases, they're very active, having the multitude of uses. And it's, it is a very popular type of amenity in these locations, and I'm, again, I'm not, I am not sure, obviously, which is why we want to talk about it, how much space we would be able to have available, that is viable, that still makes it viable to build, and, you know, obviously contribute to the overall health of the development. So, but I think that these are very popular and active, actively used locations.
This is the last slide in the presentation.
Councilmembers, discussion, questions, thoughts? Yes?
Sure. So, an idea like this isn't new. Newport Ritchie has a similar downtown. They have a playground there, a little pavilion, they have a walkway. One side of it is the Hacienda Hotel, there's shops, downtown shops, small mom-and-pop shops, ice cream, sandwiches, some retail antique store. It takes up a good amount of room, though, on that. And also, if you've been to the Florida Aquarium, just right out back is a splash pad that's extremely popular, and it doesn't take much room, it could fit inside this room. So depending on what we want to do. My concerns, besides taking money off the tax rolls, is the amount of money to build something, a simple playground, I know Mr. Langfeld could throw out numbers, but just a simple playground is not cheap, and then the maintenance, year after year after year. And like I said in goal setting, if we have something that requires an event space, where you're going to have different groups come in, or whatever's going to require somebody to coordinate that, and at some point, it may require more staff. So those are my concerns.
My biggest concern is the fact that this, this, sorry. My biggest concern is the fact that our payout structure for our debt is incumbent upon as much as the $2 million for this property as we can possibly secure. Back in April, I think it was, 2023, when we first started talking about the Riverside Park, we, the debt gets, the debts extinguished in 2035, but that requires the $2 million. If we don't have the $2 million from that, we have to continue either funding it from TIF, which will run out in 2038, and then, which will not supply sufficient funds to cover that, so to come back to taxpayers. It'll actually affect our overall village. My concern with that, not necessarily that we have to do that, my concern is that we have other general obligation issues that we're trying to plan for going forward regarding the public safety building and various other projects that, the concept is nice, but we have to, we can't encumber future, in my mind, we can't encumber future councils with that, with a $2 million hit, without trying a little bit longer. The schedules that we had worked out took us out to 2027, 2026, 2027, in efforts to sell the property, properties, because there was two of them, there's the $2 million for the business one, then there's another million for the Steak and Ale property. So that's my biggest concern, is the impact to the debt load, the debt service going forward. Again, as Councilman Chambers had indicated, what's it going to cost to build? The, just the, if I remember correctly, just the Sun Shield alone, that's on the Boys' Club and Girls' Club property, was like $100,000 just for that alone. So that's not counting any amenities and anything that would have to go in there. I'm concerned, because we really don't have a significant attractor like Fort Myers. Fort Myers is made for that type of situation. And even Hollywood Beach, you got the beach, so I mean, that's a natural attractor down there. I just hate to take the property off the market. I know there's not a whole lot of activity, I, you know, hopefully that'll change, but, you know, we've been working towards that for 25 years now. So I mean, I think it's a little too early to give up on it. If it was a, the area, if the area became a personal, I mean, a perpetual, comes off the tax rolls, I think we've got a problem. If it was a temporary-type situation, and in two, three years, we have a viable buyer that wants to buy the whole property and develop the whole thing, and that could be removed very easily and sell the whole property, it might be something that I feel would be doable. But, you know, we got, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables, I think, that have to come into play, and to me, at this point, dollars and cents initially takes precedent over what we got to do, because we've got some big project coming down the pike, and I hate to encumber us too badly into the future with that.
Councilmember McCravitt.
I've got a couple of options here. I love the idea, first of all, we could develop and sell it, that's one thing, so just because we develop it now, doesn't mean that we can't sell it later down the line. Could also develop it and rent it out, and treat it as a revenue-generating opportunity. We could do a temporary use now at almost no cost for ourselves, because it's an open space, put in food trucks, bring in other sort of low-effort amenities, temporary stage for some music, and then see if it gains traction. And if it gains traction, and there's broad public acceptance, then we can build on that when we develop a permanent use for it, whether that's to sell it, or develop it, or treat it as a park, or whatever that may be.
I'm sorry, didn't know you were close to being done, I started writing. Okay, our real estate people are here, would you like to comment on this? Give us some of your thoughts? Thank you.
Can you see John? John Lochner, I'm with Florida ROI Commercial Property Brokerage. This topic came up at the last council meeting we attended. We do believe that potentially this could help the sale of 8901, as it would reduce the size and make it more attractive to developers. So there is potential there. But we also believe, if you're looking at that concept, that 8447 may be better suited for a park.
Mr. Mayor.
Just for clarity, I believe Mr. Lochner was referring to only using half of the 8901 parcel for this type of development, and selling the other half.
Some portion, whether it's a quarter, two-thirds, whatever, yes.
Could you put, well, you're up here, could you put the map, like the aerial, do you have one just of 8901?
Yes, sir.
So I'm sorry, remind me your last name again, I'm sorry.
Lochner.
Mr. Lochner.
H and R.
Thank you. Mr. Lochner, I'm looking at this, and I'm not a developer, obviously, and kind of a layperson here, but would it be, in your opinion, desirable for development, to put a row of buildings similar to what exists on the Fountain Shop to the north, with the backs of the buildings out towards 56th Street? Although it doesn't look like the back of the building is designed so they look like, everything looks like the front. But the front of the building would face in towards the property. Would it be feasible, in your opinion, or desirable, to do that, and have that row of buildings occupied by, you know, restaurants, shops, ice cream, you know, places like that, and then have the majority of that remaining property be a space that's being contemplated here? Now, I know that the logical question, which is the next question, comes in as parking, but I'll get to that in a minute. So parking issue aside, in my mind, I can kind of visualize how that might look. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, I'm not a developer or a designer, so I want to make sure that's clear.
But we're struggling together.
I think that could be feasible, depending on what you're trying to achieve here. I understand the pedestrian corridor and how, trying to get the flow through there. It could work, but the dilemma has been, over the past few years, that you can't find a developer that would want to do that, because it's, that size of a building would require a very large retailer, unless it was built on spec, that could take on additional tenants.
Yeah. Right.
If that makes sense.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you.
I've got questions about the corner property.
Sure.
Okay, sorry. So back to 8447, you mentioned that may be a better idea. When we had the company that wanted to put the Boutique Hotel in, and they were talking about buying the corner property, that's, I think, still vacant, right? Is it for sale? Do you know the status of that corner, Bill Beauty Supply?
It is my understanding that it is for sale, it's just, it's off-market, it's not listed right now.
Okay.
Meaning he has a price.
Okay, so is that something that, if you're looking at, I know I'm a little off-topic about the playground, but if we're trying to market 8447, are you trying to say this other corner plot may be for sale, to try to market the whole thing, or is that not what we're doing?
It's not currently included in what we're discussing, but we believe that if you put in a public venue park on the lower half of 8447, that opens up to the pond area, it makes it an open space with that new park in the area, that will enhance the ability for them to develop that parcel.
Can we see that picture back up?
Okay, but if we put a park area at the southern end of 8447, that's across the street from the park we have now, and then going to renovate it and the other park, so just, we expand the, I guess, expand Springdale area, that, is that what your concept is? I mean, I know you're not a developer, you're not a playground specialist, but.
Well, when we were looking at this, and we heard the idea of a potential music venue park situation, and we were thinking of what best would help the sale of these properties, we looked at some concepts, and we believe that that's better suited, because that would create a better flow through all of the properties, and it would actually increase the pedestrian flow and traffic for Enigma Plaza, it would probably make the corner parcel more developable, and increase the flow of pedestrian traffic throughout the whole corridor.
So without pulling up a lot of stuff, so the concept of putting something like Councilmember Fernandez is advocating for on the southern end, so against the River Hill side, correct, along that route, and is that enough room between what could be there and Enigma for somebody to want to buy that, the rest of that?
I think part of our concept would be that it would only be a portion of 8447 that would be the venue park area, and then you would still be able to have a retailer develop that spot with a restaurant, maybe with an outdoor seating area that overlooks the park and the venue, and then opens up on, to the east, to the Springdale Park area.
Okay. Councilmember McCravitt.
Mr. Lochner, I was just curious, in your expertise, do you think that there would be a beneficial effect to the businesses that are currently clustered around Waverly Apartments/Win-Dixie Fountain Shops and those other adjacent areas, if we were to build out some sort of amenity in the way that Councilmember Fernandez was suggesting?
That is our idea, that, and most importantly, the way that Enigma Plaza is situated there, that this could be an open area around that with a retail, you know, destination restaurant, retail restaurant, right above the venue, the park venue.
So in terms of the future development of that parcel, 8901, rather than going the route of adding additional retail square footage, you think restaurants would be more viable as an anchor to that space?
I'm not sure I follow the question on that.
When we're talking about the 8901 parcel, the one right across from the Waverly Apartments, do you think that adding out more restaurant space there, rather than adding out retail space, would be more viable for that property, commercially speaking?
I don't think that's the issue right now. The issue is that it's a large space for a developer to take on, with, they're going to want to develop it with tenants in place, they're going to have a letter of intent from a tenant to build out that space, unless a portion of it is spec, so that they can undertake the development.
So in a situation like that, where it's difficult to get a developer because of the size of a particular arrangement of that space, do you think a public-led investment into that space to get the ball rolling would be a good idea?
I think there's some, a few things that could get the ball rolling. One of which would be that if we could work with the developers and allow them to build some of the space at spec, that still, of course, had deed restrictions in place that would, you know, in addition to the CRA, limit anything that goes in there, you know, so that you don't get things you don't want in the area. But as of now, not allowing for spec development, we've been limiting ourselves.
Have you, have you received inquiries about spec development?
Yes.
And do you, are you able to call to mind any examples that you could share, just so that we have an idea about what that means?
A lot of them are pure spec, like they want to come in and build another Fountain Shops, and have it all spec. Some are a, like, larger restaurant development with maybe half the space as spec. So, but there's been different combinations.
Yeah.
Do you think a model where the space is developed by the city, and then offered for lease to various tenants in smaller increments, so basically, we keep it wholesale, and then rent it out retail to individuals? wholesale and then rent it out retail to individuals who want to operate in that space? Do you think that would address the problem of it being too large and cumbersome for a single development?
I suppose that could address the problem.
Yeah.
If the city was going to take on the development responsibilities. There's also the potential for, um, a bare land lease.
Yeah.
Where the city just leases the land on a long-term basis to a tenant for twenty, thirty years, say, and they develop the property.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, that's all I got.
Does anybody know who owns the, the common areas of Sparkman Wharf? Is that all private property or is that city property? Does anybody know? All right, you're going to try to find out? Okay, so I'm assuming you don't know about these other Hollywood Beach or?
Hollywood Beach, I do know. Hollywood Beach, that area is owned by the City of Hollywood, and, uh, there, I spoke with city people there, um, they're actually about to remodel it. Um, the Fort Myers Gulf Coast property is privately owned by the owner of that shopping center.
Yeah, yeah. I, I. Yes. Come on up here, Mr. Langfield, thank you.
Carl Langfield, Leisure Services Director. Um, city manager reached out to me on Friday when this meeting was scheduled and asked me to, just to do some research and see what information I could, I could glean about some of the areas that you had mentioned and, um, reach out to some of my constituents to see what, what I could find as well with regards to spaces such as this and, and how they could be potentially utilized. Um, I looked at Hollywood Beach and I spoke with a staff member from there, wasn't one of the senior guys, he left a message, he didn't get back to me, but what I've been able about, the, the Hollywood Beach Theater, I believe is what it's called, um, is very unique in that it sits right on the boardwalk on Hollywood Beach and it's directly adjacent to a very large resort. And that resort is responsible for all of the bookings of what goes on in that. Now, it is a city-owned facility, it's a city-maintained facility, but there's a public-private partnership with regards to its actual operation. Um, I spoke, uh, to a gentleman from Fort Myers, it wasn't the one that you had looked at, but there's another place in Fort Myers called Calusa Sound.
Yes.
About what they do there. And again, that's a city-owned, uh, city-maintained facility, but privately operated, privately booked, and it is handled by a large hotel that is adjacent to, to that facility as well. Um, you know, and, and then you look at, at, at events such as, uh, St. Pete's First Friday, um, and other events like that, the city has one, City of Lakeland has one, and the way those operate, again, are public-private, um, partnerships where the actual event is, is managed by a private entity with the support of the city to put those events on with, you know, police and Public Works and Parks and Recreation and all those, all those entities being involved. And I kind of would, i- if, if we were to develop a spot in, in downtown like this where we're going to put a stage in and we're going to try and activate this on, on a weekly basis, that the smart play, I think, is to partner, whether it's with Chamber of Commerce or another private entity who is going to manage all the bookings and, and things like that, and, and then we, as the city, would come in and provide the logistical support to make those things happen. The, Councilmember Kravitz, just to speak to your, to your comments about doing something on a temporary basis, um, at, at that location, we're going to run into challenges with that piece of property, especially eight and eighty-nine oh one and eighty-four forty-seven as well. Their current conditions are pretty rough. Um, and then to, to try and create some sort of a temporary, um, or non-permanent, maybe a better way of describing it, uh, venue would still require a significant amount of capital expenditures upfront to make that property usable as a public space, even if it's just on a temporary, just to get the grounds in place, to break the infrastructure that we would need, whether it be electricity, plumbing, restrooms, et cetera, to, to get all those things in place to have them as well. We're still looking at significant dollars upfront to make that type of even temporary activation happen. Um, eighty-four forty-seven, as we were talking about that, one of the things that jumped into my mind when we were talking about that is we're going to build some sort of an activity space there. You now have Enigma in between it and any type of significant parking that we may have available unless we're allowed to use Enigma's parking for whatever type of activities we'd want to put there. Um, again, just some, as I'm sitting back here jotting down notes and, and research I've done over the past couple of days, just, I wanted to put my input in there. So if you have any other questions for me, you know, fire away.
Buddy Wall, he's up. Thank you, Mr. Langfield.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Lochner. Pretend we don't know what, 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 what we're doing up here. Can you give me a thirty-second?
Just pretend.
Just pretend, yeah. Give me, can you give me a thirty-second synopsis of the spec versus non-spec? Where are, what are we requiring now, or what are we looking for now as to what, what that deviate, what that change would mean as far as subdividing the property even, even further and selling this corner or that corner, whatever?
Sure, I can try.
Okay.
So, um, as we're working today, we're requiring to know who the end user is of it, of all space. And so spec would be that a developer could come in, build the shell to, of course, the requirements of the CRA and the zoning and everything, and then lease it out after that. It, it would be very similar to what Enigma is doing.
Okay, so we would want to know if there's a Panera Bread going in there or something like that? Okay, all right.
But you, of course, you could limit whoever goes in there by contract.
So the alternative, as, as Councilmember Kravitz is talking about, how would that, how would that change, or you were talking about doing a non-spec, how would that change that? It would just be a shell, just be a building, or?
It, it could be a combination. So we, like I mentioned, we've had some developers come in, they have a concept for a portion of it, but because eighty-nine oh one is a large space, they would like to build the remaining buildings as spec so that they could lease those out to others as they come along, but they would like to get their, you know, their core concept in.
So we've limited that on purpose till this point? That's, that's a general question?
Yeah.
Mr. Pauli?
So, I could try and address it. So, I, I, so this, this goes back to the, when there was a Chipotle that was proposed for the eighty-nine oh one site.
Right.
There was some concern of the council at the time. Um, I, it was right before I got here, but the, looking at the video log, I think the concern was that while it was a use of the property, there was, it was used about half the property, the other half was on spec. Um, the council itself wasn't as enamored with that concept because there's Chipotles everywhere, and I thought it was the notion of trying to get something that was more of a destination, something more unique that would bring people here, spend several hours in, in the CRA, not only at that one business, but maybe, you know, frequenting the, the coffee shop and other things. So, and that deal ultimately fell through. Uh, from that point forward, the, the direction that the broker has been operating under has been trying to, again, find something that's a little bit more original, that's a little bit more, uh, again, bringing people from like South Tampa. It's like, I've mentioned here before, people from South Tampa aren't going to come to Temple Terrace to go to a Chipotle. But if there's something cool and unique, they will make that trip because I know people here will go to South Tampa and go to Hyde Park and et cetera. So that's, that was the direction that the broker's been, uh, working under. Um, so that, that's what Mr. Lochner is referring to. I, I do like the idea about, because there has been a concern about uses and things like that, about if we, if we could contemplate deed restricting it. In other words, perhaps allowing this to be more spec-based, if the council wants to consider that based on some of the input here this afternoon, but maybe the council comes up with some uses that maybe they don't want. I've heard before, like smoke shops, things like that, because there's plenty of those, and maybe this is like, this development perpetuity, these won't be the uses that will be allowed. You could contemplate that if that's the council's wishes, that might get you to a point, kind of giving them a little bit more flexibility, but still get you the outcome that maybe you're searching for. If I can go back to the original question too, sorry, um, that you asked me about Sparksman's, Sparkman's Wharf. The, according to property praiser, the property itself is owned by the Tampa Port Authority, but the, uh, looks like the developer, the controlling entity is this LLC called Channel Side Bay Mall LLC. So I imagine they probably have a ground lease with them, uh, to develop the stores and the, uh, entertainment venue there.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Kravitz.
Just on that topic with the ground lease, it's a very interesting opportunity to, um, provide favorable terms for the ground lease, potentially on a really long-term basis, and then use that as an inducement to bring a developer in to build out the space, potentially partly to spec, partly not. Um, and so what we have is an opportunity there at relatively little cost to us, just by offering what we already own at, uh, an incentive rate to bring in some sort of development that we'd be very happy with. So that's, to your point about a ground lease, and also, uh, to the city manager's point, uh, I think that's a really good avenue to pursue. And we could then reserve certain usages and certain portions of the property for other things that would be a community amenity. So for example, a, a park, small park or fountain, or some sort of attraction, maybe an event space, and, uh, I'd be interested in hearing compared, also just to throw that in briefly, uh, what the temporary use obstacles would be, and if those could then be, um, used later on in a further development of it. So if we're going through the trouble of bringing that infrastructure in, those might be costs that we're going to have to incur either way. That's all.
I have a couple of observations. I, generally, I like the idea, but I have some doubles always in the details, and that's where I'm trying to figure out what the pathway would be. In terms of the finances, um, and the, and the remaining debt, I, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm, I'm not as concerned about the debt service as I, as we were a few years ago. I think financially the city's pretty healthy. Our total debt as a city is like less than ten million dollars at this point, I believe, nine point something, I don't, um, which for a city with the budget or size, that's a minuscule debt ratio. Um, so, and the debt that does remain is at two percent fixed, so, um, that, that, I'm, I mean, I'd love to be making, I'd love to be debt-free, but we could be debt-free. We could pay that off today if we decided to, it just would make no sense. So, um, I, I am a little, I, I share your concern about taking the, um, property off of the tax roll because it's valuable property potentially, and that, that's on the tax roll forever, so that has a big financial implication. I'm less concerned about losing the sale price. Um, I mean, it's two million dollars, but if we can make a downtown that's thriving and vibrant and activated, I think most people would be willing to forego the, the sale price if we could do that. The, I'm not really a fan of using the eighty-four forty-seven al- alternate for this use. It's not, it's, first of all, if we want to put some entertainment venue there, it's, now we're getting closer and closer to the residences that we're trying to stay away from. That's why we didn't do that on Riverside Park or Springdale Pond Park because of the residences right there. So I, I, I would feel more comfortable with this type of activity center being a little further away from the, the residences that are there. Here's, I, I can see this, and I think it's a cool concept. In my mind, I can see a Sparkman Wharf down there. The picture you showed of, um, well, all of them really, one's in a shopping center counter, that's reminiscent to me of Wiregrass, you know, it's the same kind of, it's a, it's a, it's a green space area, but it's really about the shopping experience. It's there. The other one, the Hollywood Beach, uh, really got into that one, actually, it's pretty, it's a pretty cool space. And I, I could see this concept on that prop, on this property where you have, you know, and I think there's room to, to do what Councilmember Kravitz and, and Mr. Lochner are talking about, where, you know, either allowing a little more flexibility with some spec buildings and then outside of that. But here's the, here's a problem that I can't quite work through in my mind, and I don't know what the path is forward on this, is if we built the property, or built buildings along there so that we had shops and restaurants, and then we had this gathering area with a little stage and stuff out there, I think that is a really cool concept. But where do those people park? Because the parking spaces that would normally be required for those shops would be used up by the green space or the, the gathering area. So where do those people park? And just a little rough math I did, that property is seventy-six thousand square feet. Now, obviously, some of that would be dedicated to buildings and, you know, so it wouldn't be total seventy-six thousand square feet. But that's usually, on that type of activity, you want seven to ten square feet per person for the kind of activity that we're contemplating. So if you use the whole property, you could fit seventy-five hundred people there, which I don't think that's really what we, I mean, you wouldn't have the whole property. But cut that in half, I mean, you could still have a couple thousand there, right? So just cut it down to three thousand. I mean, we had just under twelve hundred at the Craft Beer Festival the other day. So if you extrapolate that, I think twenty-five hundred to three thousand people is probably a reasonable size crowd. Cut that in half, because two people per car, where do those, where are we going to park them? And we do have some parking, some of those apartment complex parking spaces are actually ours. I doubt the tenants know that. They, they've been parking in our spaces the whole time they lived there because they don't, you know, we're not using them. So we do have some parking there, I don't, but not nearly enough to accommodate two thousand people, what, fifteen hundred cars or whatever. I don't know where we park them. And that's, you know, if you go to Sparkman Wharf or you go to Curtis Hickson Park, they bleed off into the side streets, there's parking garages every few blocks in, in downtown. Parking can be difficult at Curtis Hickson, but you may have to walk four or five blocks, but there's parking. Here, there isn't, and I would hate to drive parking into the residential streets because there's nowhere to park. So what would we do about that?
I don't know exactly, and that's, I mean, obviously, that's one of the questions that I would have for somebody who is professionally skilled in this area, and that would be, one, that, the whole reason that I, I even proposed this is because we were not getting offers on the property.
That we want.
That, that, we've had offers, but they were not offers that were maximizing the return on the property. And it is, maybe people wouldn't always come from South Tampa or somewhere else, but we'd like to activate our space because that will help increase usage of whatever it, it is that is built there. So my, I mean, that would be, my question would be, what would a layout look like that would be, that would provide a use to help activate the space, but also still leave the viable development space? And parking is obviously one of those because people are primarily going to drive up there, even though there are probably many people in the city who would bring their golf carts, which take up less room, they, you'd still need to be able to provide the parking space. I don't know the answer to that, but my, my only goal is to make, to, to see that we're creating a space that people want to come to, to help activate it, to help provide value for somebody who wants to develop it. Um, I mean, that, that has been the goal from the beginning of acquiring this property.
But the parking thing is a very real challenge that we need to figure out, and, and I don't know that there's anybody with, that has any expertise that's going to create space that we know doesn't exist. There's no, there, there's nobody that has the expertise to find parking spaces that don't exist. And the only alternative that I see, which is doable, if we, if, I mean, this is a good conversation. I don't know if this is what we would want to do, but, because now we would be taking two pieces of property off the tax rolls, but we could turn eighty-four forty-seven into parking and activate eighty-nine oh one as event space. But then that leads to another question that I have, a, and I do know from being around this redevelopment for a while, unsuccessfully mostly, but, but, um, you, you have to have a balance of stuff. You can have even too much of a good thing is not good, like, I mean, even, that's what happened with Ebor, it became all alcohol-based, it became like bars. And so they're trying to fix that now, but it got out of balance. Since we had this discussion about eighty-nine oh one a few years ago. Since we had this discussion about 8901 a few years ago, might have been before you were back, I'm not sure.
It was before I was back.
Yeah, we did have some similar discussion about this 8901. But since that time, we've decided to develop the Riverside Park project, partly because those parcels are so limited in what you could do with, for anything else. So now that we're developing all of that, I mean, are we just gonna have, like, a downtown, we don't have a downtown, we have, we have Central Park, but no Manhattan. There's nothing down there to do, there's nowhere to, so it would have to be like you're envisioning, where there's a row of buildings, or shops, or something. But are we gonna have enough activation down there to activate 8901 and Riverside Park? That's a lot of green space.
Well, what I'm, I mean, at least in my mind, what I'm seeing is different. And that is Riverside Park is very natural and more passive, with the exception of if somebody's going to be fishing, which can be passive, and then, and kayaking. And then if we were to have a space in the more built section, that that wouldn't be necessarily as passive in that, but again, but the only thing I'm motivated by is trying to make this development more attractive. And it doesn't necessarily have to have the stage, and it doesn't have to have that specific layout, maybe that doesn't work for this space. Maybe there's a splash pad in the middle and green space around it, and that makes it smaller, and leaves room for the building, but yet it's still active.
Yeah, but I think your idea of having the stages, and I mean, that's a cool idea, I like it. So here, I think, between listening to what Councilmember Kravitz and Mr. Lochner and you said, I could see, I could see a pathway to something here. I could see us do deed restrictions or whatever, I could see us making this easier for somebody to come along and make a proposal. Maybe we do put some spec and say, and we control the kinds of uses, rather than we want to know specifically, you know, because I could see that's difficult. You don't know that Joe's Ice Cream's gonna come in, because Joe's Ice Cream may not even exist today, right? It could be something that, like, ooh, I'm gonna start a business and put it in that building. I could see a way that we could develop a concept that maybe we could go to the market and say, this is what we want, a Sparkman Wharf version, our version of a Sparkman Wharf. And maybe there could be some public-private, maybe we don't have to pay to build everything. Maybe if they, if they get some freedom to bring in some of the businesses that they want to bring in, and they've got to build some of this, and maybe through some incentives we could provide, they have to build some of this, too. Maybe we could get to this. The remaining, I think that's, I think that's a concept that could be worked. The thing I can't figure out in this, and I don't see the solution, the brick wall I keep running into, is the parking. I don't see, I don't see the answer. So maybe, if we can figure that part out, I think we got something. Councilmember Kravitz.
First point, the only point I really have to make on that is, if you go to downtown and look around at different times of day, you'll see that it's full certain times and not full at all, for example, in the evenings. I imagine most of the events that we're discussing are not gonna happen in the middle of the day when people are at work, they're gonna happen in the evening. So as far as I can see, there may not be a parking problem. I think that we should actually look at the utilization in the parking spaces that we have, before we conclude that there's not enough parking, especially if we're going to gradually ramp this up. And if we start, we're not gonna have an entire downtown development materialize out of thin air, it's gonna take some time, and then we'll be able to measure the parking impact. And then if we notice that there's no parking, then we can always do something with another property, or maybe find some other unconventional solution. That would be my suggestion.
I don't understand what you mean by we're gonna go into this gradually. If we develop this and somebody bought it, and built these buildings, and then we built the stage or the green, how's that, I don't, what do you mean by the gradual implementation?
I would imagine that it'll be done gradually, especially if you have different businesses opening up at different times. You see it right now in downtown already. Not all of the spaces there are leased out. If they were all leased out, there would be more parking demand. So the idea that it'll all just suddenly be complete and fully rented out isn't practical, in my view. So it'll be a slow ramp up, no matter how you do it, and we have retail space now, which is empty, and that's also a slow ramp up right now, we hope, or it's, you know, hopefully gonna be leased out at some point soon, but.
No, I see what you're saying about the space won't maybe be 100% occupied at the beginning, but when you have a special event in there.
Yes.
It's, you get what you get. I mean, you, that, that's the, yeah, it would, well, I don't know that it'd even be sufficient, because you'd probably have no parking on that lot if you're gonna do the green, or very little. I mean, if, you'd have to have parking somewhere, even for the shops, that would be open when there's no special event. But you're not gonna have a parking on the green space.
No.
No.
So.
Which is why I would say, this would be more a question of somebody who has developed something similar, that they would be able to say, well, you could, this is what we would need to have a viable commercial development, and this is the parking that we would need, and here's, here's the measurement of your space, here's what you can have for a green space. You know, maybe it doesn't have the full size that the Fort Myers Gulf Coast Center has or someplace, you know, maybe it's a slightly scaled-down version of that. I don't, I don't really know the answer to that.
Yeah, I don't either, and I, probably Greg's staff could, I mean, come up with some ballpark. If you put buildings down the 56th Street side, how many square feet roughly would that be, and then how many spaces would be required for that many? I mean, you could do some rough calculations on that.
Yes, sir, we would have to use, use samples, because parking requirements does change, they do change based on the different uses. Restaurants is the most intense. Current parking standards, even though code does allow council to approve site plans that are flexible with parking requirements for this space, because the whole idea is to increase intensity and density, I'm sorry, in this space. But just for simple numbers, every four chairs in a restaurant is a parking space. So you can imagine how quickly restaurant use, or multiple restaurant uses, can chew through some parking spaces quickly. Really, just looking at Fountain Shops to the North, you referenced them earlier with regards to something similar, and you can see how they're put together. They have a mix of retail, they have a banking institution, they have a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, and a restaurant. So you can see that they are built out to accommodate the full width, if you will, of their property, to match that, that space with their parking. We can do some, some similar markup for this property. I'm just not sure how far we can go with those uses, and how much space is gonna be left.
Well, that's, that's my, yeah, I know, that's my concern, is that how much space, if you put even minimal parking, how much space is left for your green? That's the, it's all ratios, and I'm just concerned about that. Yeah, city manager, vice mayor.
Yes, two points. Number one, with the parking, I think the parking is a very critical issue, but I think we're gonna drive community development nuts, trying to come up with a way to say, okay, we're gonna put three different options, or three different venues, or three different storefronts, and now, uh-oh, we don't have enough parking spaces to accommodate everybody. I don't know that we can do, build it as we go. We have to have, we have to have some firm guidelines for them to work from, to move forward, because otherwise, it's just a moving target, we just, let's just pick it out. I'm wondering, though, if we're getting outrageous with it, could we replat or re-subdivide the parcel now, and say, okay, this area is dedicated to whatever you wanna call it, the ban shell, or splash pad, or whatever, okay? And then designate certain areas that we could possibly go out and sell those individual areas, instead of trying to sell the whole thing en masse. Can we break it down and subdivide it? You know, I don't know if it makes sense, and I don't know how expensive that would be, what it would cost to, to, to affect, but that way, we could secure green space for something. Again, I'm not against the concept, I'm just trying to think of all the pitfalls and some of the issues. I do believe financially, it's gonna be an issue in the future. You know, we have any kind of, any kind of, you know, property tax values are going down this year. We know we're gonna, we know we're gonna start hitting a brick wall here soon. So I don't mean to sound like a Debbie Downer on it, but it's, it, we have to be, we have to be careful. And we can't, can't encumber ourselves for future, other future financing we want to do. I'm not against the concept, but maybe we could break it down smaller, would that be easier to market? And I'm asking for a quick answer, and I know the city manager was.
I was trying actually to, if I could, that's partly what Vice Mayor's just brought up. So I remember when I was working in redevelopment, the cardinal rule that we always went by is government should never build anything that's not a government building, because inevitably, we won't, that's not our business, and we'll probably do a poor job of it. So just to offer something here for council's consideration, if, if we wanted to give direction, Mr. Lochner can tell me if this is a harebrained scheme as well, would be, what if council reframed a direction to ROI, saying, you know, open up the site, we're open to some spec, we're more comfortable with spec, we might have some use restrictions, maybe we can talk about those. But at the same time, we want to consider potentially a public, quasi-public space as part of the overall development of the site. And if that means that maybe the site, to your point, Vice Mayor, they don't need the whole site, they don't want to pay $2 million for a two-acre site, because they don't need the two acres, they really need one acre, well, maybe that's part of the negotiation, and maybe there's, you know, in their building of their site, maybe they can tie in and actually build the, the public venue space as part of that development, and we negotiate that in the price, in the transaction. And then we'd have to figure out who maintains it going forward, but I think those are all details that we could hammer out, if we had the right people at the table, as long as we gave them, you know, pretty wide latitude as to, you know, how to market this thing, and who to bring. I'd rather do that, and not have us be the ones building anything. And I think to the point that was made earlier, if we don't develop, if we let the site, we do the festival space, excuse me, if we just leave the site bare, we never sell it. Yes, we would never get the revenue, and we calculated that would be $15,000 to $20,000 a year potentially in tax revenue, based on the comparable use of that site in perpetuity, so we'd lose that. It's really the investment to build the space ourselves, that's the bigger, that's when I'm scratching my head as to how we're gonna be able to pull that off with the other things we want to do, like Riverside Park. So if there's a way that we can negotiate it with a developer, and then we negotiate that as part of the package, maybe there's, the price gets, you know, reduced in exchange for this or that, I'd rather do that and recommend that to you as a body to consider than the alternative.
One other thing, and I'll shut up, golf carts. I agree with you wholeheartedly, be able to get down there, but we have to come up with an alternative way. You can't get there from the north.
Right.
You cannot get in that complex from the north side of the complex. You can only commit off Chicago. So we have to figure out a way to be able to commit off the north, and that would obviously require crossing Bullard Parkway at that point. So that's just, you, and you can't get out that way either, so that'd be something we need to address.
What's another change?
I was gonna say, I like city manager's idea. That's what I was thinking about, opening it up. I didn't realize we were putting such restrictions on the sale of that land, open up some spec. And I like the idea of one of two things, either reduce the price of the property to get what we want, but also they can set up the venue, or we get the full price, or something like that. We build something like Councilmember Fernandez is suggesting, and have that, whatever that group coming in to manage it like they do at other places. The first thing, though, is opening it up to maybe some more spec, and we see what we've got. I didn't really realize that was a constricting the pool of potential buyers.
I think if we're gonna do that, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I think if that's the way we want to move, I think it's very important that we do figure out what things we want to disallow first, because we go out to that, you know, we don't, we don't want a flea market, I mean, we don't want wig shops, we don't, there's certain things we don't want.
Yeah. One quick side issue. With the current legislation that's in front of the state regarding CRAs, does any of this activity trigger any kind of disallowance of the CRA status? Because I think that they're trying to throw some left, left ball, you know, curveballs into that, into that legislation, that if you make any changes, it nullifies what you've got. Does that, we have any worries with that?
So there's a provision, there are provisions in the current legislation precluding additional debt. There's also, the most troubling one is, after a certain date this year, I mean, it's July 1st or October 1st, I forgot which date it is, that CRAs wouldn't be able to add new That hasn't been defined in my mind yet, so I'd have to figure out what that would mean. We have to have, all CRAs have to have a development plan. I don't think this is necessarily gonna change our development plan, it's still, we're still selling the property like we have been, and that we're simply asking for some criteria in the sale to add a public component to it potentially, if that's what you want to do. So I don't think that necessarily changes. I think if you wanted, now, if you wanted to build the festival space directly, forget the private sector component, then we'd probably have to look at this and see what the legislation impacts that specific.
And, and I don't know if this is gonna be, if this really is something new, because if you go back and look at the massive amounts of documents that exist on when, when the property was sold to Vlas, there was a lot of public component in there. They were supposed to be building a mini convention center there. There was gonna be, I don't know if it was an opera house or what it was, but there was, there was a large public component.
It was a theater.
Yeah.
It was a performing.
So it may not be considered a change, if that's, you know, one of the criterias that's, that's gonna be limiting.
I would just hate for this to come up and bite us in the end, we're having to do all this effort, and then the new legislation messes it up. That's all.
So, yes.
Well, so I do like the suggestions made by the city manager, and I really would ask our realtors what they think will make the property more viable, the most viable, in order to maximize the use and the return to the city for this space. So.
I think he already told us that, didn't he?
Well, I mean, he has suggested that we alter and allow some spec, as we've discussed, and that there is a, a value to open space. So I don't have any issue basically going with what our city manager suggested, and say, hey, let's, let's see if somebody wants this property and comes to us with a, a plan that would provide for building and, and potentially having some open space to have it activated.
Okay. So this has been, what was that, what we're doing with discussion? Yes, Councilman?
Vice Mayor. Is the, I'm just curious, the tax revenue, very important, I understand that. Is that, is that why, is that the reason why you may prefer to sell it at a discounted rate with a public component versus a land lease at a discounted rate, because capturing that tax revenue is essential?
Well, I mean, if we have to take it off the tax rolls, and you have TIF issues, it's just regular general property taxes, but I don't have much appetite for the city owning it, and leasing it, managing it into perpetuity. I like the, the concept of, of opening it up, changing, you know, different options with, with it. But, yeah, I mean, it all comes into play.
Yeah. The only, the only thought I have on that is that it's such a critical space within the downtown, it might be good to keep a finger in there over a longer period of time, but I understand your perspective, too, on that.
Let me make sure that I understand where we are and what our desire is moving forward. Been good discussion, by the way, thank you for bringing this up. So what is actionable out of this discussion? We're going to, what, we're going to give new guidance to the broker, we're going to allow for the, the building of spec space, however, we need to then, as a body, talk about what types of things we want to disallow. Is that, and then we want to change the list. Is that, and then we want to change the listing on this to kind of encourage some public space as part of the project?
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't necessarily, I, I'm not proposing public space just to have public space. My perspective at least is that the space that I have seen in the places that we talked about, we're helping to activate the businesses around them. And that is where I see the value. And that, that is what I'm thinking is that any space of that nature would, the, the very existence and design of it would be to help provide value to the businesses that are around it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, that's, you said it better than I did, yeah. So Mr. B, is this guidance, is this clear enough for you and Mr. Pauli and the broker to figure this out or?
I think one thing that we just wanted to make clear is in order for all of this to happen, I think there has to been, there's going to be some negotiation. Right now, Mr. Pauli, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a floor, a price floor is in there for, we don't entertain projects that come under, if they offer us below a certain amount, we don't even bring them to the council. Is that correct?
That has been the past practice. I can tell you that my communications with the broker in, in more recent months has been that my, I believe that this council would entertain potentially lower sale price if the project was the best use of the property.
Right. That's what I'm trying to get at. So if we, if we have a, if we, Mr. Lochner nodded, tell me, shake your head otherwise. Just tell me if I'm wrong. If, if council wasn't okay with this, we would go to ROI and we'd say, listen, we, we'd want to market the property differently. We're, we're okay with spec, whatever uses you want to limit, you'd have to tell us. And, but as a component, we are willing to entertain projects that might include some activated, public oriented space. Doesn't have to be public per se, I think, right? But just open like the Wiregrass or the Gulf Center, something like that on a scale that can be a place where people could gather. It'll probably, obviously, I would think benefit the businesses as well that they're being developed. But we're not going to have necessarily a floor. I think you can't have a, if you have a price floor, it's too many constrictions like this. They want you to build public space and they want a price floor. So I think have them, have the market dictate to us, here's an idea. It means I'm going to pay X for this property, but I'm going to give you Y. And if council likes that, great. If you don't.
Yeah, I'm all, personally, I don't know the council, I mean, I'm all in favor of taking the floor out for things that are interesting projects that will activate the downtown. I, you know, get short sighted and, oh, we're going to lose out on a million dollars or, well, yeah, but we're going to get the downtown we've been trying to get for 30 years. So, you know, yeah. Councilmember Kravitz.
My comment on that is I think we should invert the criteria. Instead of looking at the, the price first, we should say whoever offers us the greatest community benefit for that space and for the surrounding businesses is going to be highly considered. And then the other factors we're going to look at are the reliability and track record of the developer and also their ability to follow through.
And if I could just, Councilmember Kravitz, so the last element is we do have that, there's this vetting process, so we wouldn't change that. And, and Mr. Lochner, that'd be okay if you, we still vet the candidates to make sure they've got a track record and financial stability to, before we bring them to you.
And past, past successful projects though. I think that's another important factor.
Right. We'd ask for basically a list of references for things that they've worked on. And there'd be some that may have a very lengthy list. There may be others, maybe a little shorter list, but maybe the ideas are pretty creative. And again, factors you may want to consider.
Fantastic.
Do we need to have a CRA meeting before we bring it back to council? An agency meeting?
Well, the property, you, you tell me. This is your area of expertise.
The property's owned by the city.
It's in the CRA though. So probably the.
Uh, microphone.
Probably the CRA committee should, or the CRA, anyway, that it should discuss this at least briefly first and then present it to council, so.
So while we're on that topic, who should, which hat should we be wearing when we have the discussion of the types of uses we want to disallow? Does that need to be a CRA discussion before council takes it up?
Since it is in the CRA, then that commit, I don't know, I don't know whether to call it a committee or a board or what it is, but anyway, that, that should be who discusses that first and then presents that to council.
Okay. Okay. So we would need then to schedule a CRA meeting for the purpose of giving guidance to re, to revise the marketing approach. And also we would need to have discussion about what types of uses we would want to disallow. And I, I think the council would have some things that they would come up with on their own, but we could probably also use some help with that from other similar types of projects or CRAs or cities that are trying to rejuvenate their downtown. We may not think of some things. So we could probably use a little input from staff on that. And some of them are obvious. We don't want hookah lounges. We don't want, you know, but some of them are less obvious. Do we want a bar? You know, I, bless you. So we could probably use a little guidance on that. Okay. What are we missing? Yes, Mr. Pauli?
I just wanted to follow up with vice mayor's question earlier. He did ask a question in, of staff, and then the conversation kind of drifted away from it. You ask a question about plating and replating the property. The property, even though we speak of it as one property, it's actually 13 much smaller parcels.
We sliced it.
We, we sliced it years ago for that exact purpose. In fact, if you recall back in the, I want to say it was around 2015, 2016, we sliced them all in that area so that they could be easily divided. Now, having said that, I would like to share with the council that this property would be easily divided to bisect it with a line running east and west, because that's the way it is currently platted. In other words, if you wanted to cut the north half off of the south half, that is a very easy division of the property. However, if council's wish is to cut the property in any other direction, such as from north to south and split it into two long, narrow pieces, if you will, that would definitely require a replat.
Wouldn't that make more sense to undertake that if we had a developer that came to us and said, I'd like to buy this section and do this and this? And then we would have to replat it as part of that. But, I mean, if we did that now proactively, we might not be lining up with what they want anyway.
That's correct, sir. And, and I'll defer to Mr. Lochner for more detail on this, but my belief is, is that developers always going to want that road frontage, that high traffic road frontage.
You remember that marathon session where we redid that, where it was redone? I think Cheryl's about died trying to recite all the folios and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, like 200 foot wide, something like that. They're pretty narrow.
That, well, the slices run east and west, but the slices on this particular parcel are not more than, I think, 25 or 26 feet tall.
Oh, really?
There's, this par, 8901 is actually made up of 13 individual parcels that are all 221 feet east and west, but only about 25 or 26 feet north and south.
One more question to Mr. Lochner, if I could. My information about this is pretty out of date geographically and also timewise. Do you know roughly speaking what the value differential would be between the road front property versus the property that's toward the interior?
Which property?
Talking about 8901, the one we were just discussing, how it's platted in a, it's platted in a way where you can cut off the bottom half and the top half out of Butts 56th Street. Could be sold separately. So if that, would you say that the overwhelming preponderance of the value is in the road front property or is it, you know, do you, could you hazard a guess as to what square foot price you might get for the part on the street versus not on the street?
Well, the way it's set up now, they all have frontage on 56th. So unless you wanted to go change that. But obviously investors and developers, when they see this, they're looking at frontage. They're looking at traffic counts, demographics, all those things playing into when they look at a parcel.
I'm sorry. Brian, could you please put my computer screen on the big screen temporarily? If you look here, you can see the property appraisers mapping of the parcel. This is 8901. All of those very narrow lots that are stacked on top of each other, that is the 220 feet wide by 25 feet tall slices that I was mentioning a moment ago. So here you can see, if we were to take the top six or seven and cut them off of the bottom, they would still have road frontage on 56th Street. If we did it the other way where we had to redraw the lines running north and south, then you would be bisecting the parcel, putting half of it fronting 56th Street and the other half inbound towards Bertha Palmer.
Thanks, I misunderstood. I thought it was the exact opposite, or it's my 90 degrees off.
Okay. So one last time to make sure we're in agreement. We're going to schedule a CRA meeting. And the goals of the CRA meeting are to revise the way we're marketing the property, to reflect the ideas that council member Fernandez brought forward for some public event space to better activate the downtown. And at that meeting, we are also going to discuss the types of use, uses that we want to disallow from that property. And we're going to get some input from staff at that meeting from, on those potential disallowable uses also. Does that make sense? Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. City manager, is that sufficiently detailed enough for you to move forward?
I think so. If you'll allow me, just, Mr. Lochner, is there anything else you need in preparation for that, that you want to kind of just vet here real quick before we go down this road?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
This is. We'll clarify a lot of things.
Okay.
I, I think currently the CRA actually has a lot of restrictions that you may want to discuss before coming up with the new ones because they may already be covered.
Do you? Yes, he is correct, sir. The, the reciprocal easement and operating agreement has certain restrictions and obligations of the tenants in that area as well as the overall district of the CRA.
So what we can do is we'll, we'll summarize those as part of the prep for the CRA meeting renewal list. This is what we, we feel.
Which is already disallowed.
Which is already disallowed. And then you can look at that list and we'll do some research and some other sort of public private partnerships or in areas that are kind of around the state perhaps, that we can see if they've had use restrictions and we'll carve something together for you.
May already be covered sufficiently.
Yeah. Okay, we can do that.
All right. Thank you for bringing it up. Interesting discussion, good discussion. Thank you. Anything else that we want, any final comments on this? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Appreciate it. We'll stay on the journey.